Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 9 Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting and ask if you have pagers or cell phones. If you would silence those now, we would appreciate that. And if you are not the applicant and you wish to address us on a case, there are sign up sheets. They look like this. They're on the table outside the chambers. And if you would complete that and give it to our secretary here, we'd be happy to hear you. And JJ, first order of business is approval of the minutes.
We approve.
Page 26th. We have a motion of second to approve the minutes. Cast your votes, and the minutes are approved. Continuance request, JJ?
I have one uncontested request. It's item 11 CE 806. I request this item be deferred to June 23rd.
Did anyone come today to talk to us about item 11, our agenda?
Over the uncontested. Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the continuance
of item 11. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
I have two new requests for continuance. That's item 3 CE 6285 deferred to June 23rd, and item 8 SPUD 615 deferred to July 14th.
And again, same question. Anyone come to talk to us about items? 3 and 8, Jerry? If you come up to the -- and if you give us, Jerry, your name and address for the record.
My name's Jerry Gilbert. I live at 3801 Northwest 62nd Street. And I was here to talk about item 615, I guess FUD 615. This item came to my attention about a month ago, and I was prepared to come down. I believe it was May 26th. This was supposed to be heard. I was informed the day before that it was being deferred. Today, I left my office and came over here, assuming it was going to be heard. And now it's being asked for a deferred again, which is very unfair, I think, to those who are trying to oppose it. I would ask the applicant, what possibly can be gained by deferring this another time?
Dean?
Mr. Gilbert's question is mine, which is what do you intend to accomplish between now and July 14th?
Dean Dyess, Commercial Foreman Express. We are going to completely redo our architectural drawings, change everything to be more suitable to the location. And we visited with the staff about this, and that's when we asked for the continuance. What would be of more interest to me than the building design per se at the moment is ingress and egress. I look at 62nd Street. I mean, I look out at that from my office window, so I watch that intersection and how traffic behaves all the time. And it's very difficult to get onto Portland from 63rd Street. A lot of people want to go north, not south. I see some really imaginative driving techniques to get in and out of there. And I see an accident or more a week at Portland and 63rd Street. So I'm kind of, how do we justify a lot of traffic or any additional traffic there?
On these architectural drawings that we're redoing, it also shows the driveway access to this building, to where it will be where there's no left-hand turns can be made out of that parking area.
So you'll send traffic through the neighborhood?
No, no traffic through the neighborhood.
So then I don't understand. Are you saying traffic coming out of 62nd Street would now only be able to go south?
No, sir. I'm saying the traffic coming out of his parking lot would only be able to go back to Portland, not through the neighborhood.
I don't have any access to the complete plans, but it's inconceivable to me, anyway, that maybe the city staff would allow access onto Portland. There's less than an eighth of a block there now.
That's not what Mr. Dyess was saying. The access would be on 62nd.
It would be access on the Northwest Highway.
The access would have to be on 62nd Street. It couldn't be either Portland or Northwest Highway.
It'll come out on 62nd and go back to Portland, is what I said.
Well, here again, the amount of space between Portland and where the driveway would come out of this particular site is so short. Already, we see cars backing up there in their frustration, do unbelievable maneuvers, trying to make a left turn onto Portland.
I understand.
And I have empathy for the person who owns the lot. But that lot has been sitting there for years. When it was auctioned off this last time, there was a lot of hype by the auctioneer about what great potential it had. But that lot has been sitting there vacant for many, 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 many years. It was probably a mistake at the time that the development was approved to allow that lot to sit, sit like that.
Okay, well, we need to, we don't need to hear, we're starting to hear the case, and our issue is, are we going to continue this one or not? Commissioners?
I'm happy to continue it. I mean, if they've got changes to their elevations, their architecture, and again, additional changes to the access back to, because that was a concern, I think, that Commissioner Gales has about the size of the structure, et cetera.
Nick, you have something?
Mr. Chairman, I, we have continued a couple of times. It works well. But my concern was addition to how they're going to take access was, this is the first time, first effort I could recall where we actually saw architectural rendering, and it appears way out of scale. And when I said something about that prior meeting, I was told that's one of the reasons we need to redo that. That said, I think we probably ought to take one more turn. And the other thing that bothers me about this case, this land's been sitting there forever. It's tough, terrible access. But an underlying problem with it is, if it's so bad that it can't be developed, then do we say that? Say this man can't develop his land? Or if it's so bad, in and out there now, it's such a public safety deal, do we close that street at port? What do we do? There are some more profound questions underlying this application also, but I would like to --
Well, let me comment. I agree about the, actually, I think I agree about continuing, but I think it's also helpful to have this discussion, even though we're going to continue it, let the applicant know that the serious concerns are around this horseshoe, about what it is you propose to do, and then Mr. Gilbert's concerns about traffic 62nd Street. It may be similar to that on cue application and what the rest of the neighborhood did with, you know, some sort of restriction on turns, left turns, right turns, no entry, signs put up, et cetera. But those kind of things, while on cue was permitted to be there, the neighborhood was benefited by other things that happened during these meetings between the applicant and the neighborhood. So the encouragement for the next month, in addition to doing your drawings, meet with the neighborhood people and tell them what you're going to do. And then maybe you guys can work out something about how you can solve the problem that, John, you look at every day. So is there a second? Or I guess, and you seconded.
I'm sorry, was it two weeks or a month?
July 14th, I think. Is that not right?
Yes, sir. July 14th.
Well, let's hope we have it fixed, then, so we don't have to keep doing this.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this to July 14th. Cast your votes, and it's continued. Are there any continuance requests from, we need to vote on this, continuing these two items first.
We continue one, but there's still a lot.
Yeah, we still need to continue item 3.
I move to recontinue item number 3.
Okay, we have a motion to continue item 3. Cast your votes. Now, are there any continuance requests from the public today? Thank you. JJ, number one?
Item 1 PC 10278, an application by Marcus Uday to resign 312 West Britton Road from the R1 District to the C4 General Commercial District.
Good afternoon. I'm Marcus Uday. I'm the applicant.
And your address, please.
12225 Bravada Court.
Thank you. Commissioners, no one has signed up? Any questions?
I move to approve of the application.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 1.
I want to comment on what the staff said about a possible alternative, amend it to an I-1 instead of C4 to restrict the outdoor storage and display. And that wasn't a staff TE, but C4 would allow outdoor storage, I'm assuming. Is that right?
The difference between the two, C4 will allow outdoor storage of items offered for sale at all times. And in the I-1 District, it allows outdoor storage and display of items offered for sale, but they have to be brought in when the business is closed. That's the only difference.
I mean, that, I, it's, if it's beneficial to the neighborhood, to the South, and there are houses there, I think it should be I-1 if you would.
He's going.
I've actually been out to the neighborhood directly south of us, because I knew that that would be a concern, being that it's all residential. I was not very successful in catching anybody at home, but I did catch one resident. It was Ms. Joanne Wallace of 313 92nd. She purported to know quite a few individuals in the neighborhood, so I went to my office and actually printed up a quick glance at what we plan on doing with the property, which is constructing a daycare there. I've spoken to her, and she says that they're all in agreement with it. And she's actually added me to her church prayer list that everything goes through with it, so.
So you're going to do a daycare there?
That's our plan.
Oh.
Aren't there a lot less restrictive zoning classifications that would permit a daycare than C4? You could zone this any number of things and do what you're planning to do with it.
Yeah, and I spoke to the zoning department about that whenever we filed the application. But upon talking to our architect as far as drawing the plans, the number one immediate caution and the caution that they've given us throughout is that we want to be able to have the freedom of that C4 zoning, even if we don't live up to what it allows us.
I still move that we approve the application as submitted.
Okay, well.
And JJ, I mean, knocking together, I have some concerns I must say about reducing --
Your microphone, Janice.
Introducing any more industrial and backing that up to residential, even though I understand what you're saying. Is there anything in terms of buffering that would be different between the two zoning classifications in terms of protection of the people most directly to the South?
No, that they'd require the side proof screening and the five-foot landscape buffer on both.
Well, you know, you've got C4 there and I-1, all mixed in.
Yeah, it's hard to see that that's not an appropriate classification for this site, given what's there, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 1. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 2 is PUD 1436, application by Wind Construction, 3 Zone 11 901 Northeastern to the PUD 1436 District.
Mr. Chairman, members of commission, Dennis Box. I'm here with Rick Thompson. He's the owner of Wind Construction. This is a 95-acre parcel. It's been operated, originally operated by a country in Western Star from Oklahoma, and Gene Autry. And he had a radio and TV channel station here. So there's an office building, and there's a tower. My client has Wind Construction. And Wind Construction, last summer, was told they're in the quarter shore district, and they needed to start looking for places to move. And they're given a two- to five-year timeframe. And this is a location that Rick found, and it's a beautiful site. We originally, and the map that you have in front of you shows a track 1 and track 2. Track 2 is going to be the shop, and it would allow for maintenance of vehicles, et cetera. And you've got a protest letter in there from some lawyer named Irvin Box.
No relation, indirect?
He lives in the house directly to the north and west, that large house there. And through negotiations and working with the neighbors, through Mary Ann Cook and Rod Cook and the neighborhood, we agreed to take out the shop use. So there's no longer a track 2 that's a shop. You have a track 1, which would be for the offices. And track 2 will be the remainder of the property, which will be double A, less than except a couple of mobile home uses. So I have been told that the Cooks are now in support. I've not had an opportunity to talk to Irvin Box, but I think their main concern was the shop, and we have agreed to take that out. And this was an interesting slide to look at, because when Gene Autry got it zoned, he also placed a covenant on the property. And that covenant provides that when we rezone it, it will extinguish the covenant. And my client has agreed, separate from the zoning, to enter into a 13-year covenant that we will not come back before this commissioner or the council for a rezoning request. So with that, we're here to answer any questions. I know the staff, with regard to the TEs, has submitted me a list of uses that they would like to delete. And my client can agree to all those, except for, he would like the opportunity, now keep in mind, we're using, we're talking about track 1, and I'm talking about the O2 office-based district. But the uses that we would like to keep, that the staff has recommended we take out, would be childcare centers, only related to my client's business. Wouldn't have an independent. Dwelling units, which, there's a large commercial building that will be remodeled for offices, and we might like the opportunity to put a loft on top of it. And 8300.53, which is medical services, and an employment office, which are uses that are very similar to the use my client proposes to put on the property.
Dennis, tell me about track 1 again.
Track 1 is where the existing structure sits. It's been used for offices for a number of years. And track 1, we're going to agree, except the four uses that I mentioned, to take out all the uses that the staff recommended we delete. And so it will remain very limited use office.
And what will be the permitted uses in track 2, then?
Double A, and we're going to take out the two mobile home uses.
Okay. And you're agreeable with the rest of the TEs? Dennis?
Let me check one thing, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioners, comments or questions? No one signed up?
I move that we approve the application as modifac, leaving in the uses that Dennis raised, the childcare, the dwelling, medical service, and employment office. Deleting all the rest is fast, middle and as we read into the records.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 2 as conditioned. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You want that?
Yeah.
Item 3 has been deferred to June 23rd. Item 4 CE 6288, final plat of Village Verley, located west of Mustang Road and south of Memorial Road.
Good afternoon. Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting Engineers, 815 West Main, representing the developer on this file, excuse me, on this final plat. We've read the TEs, agree with everything, and just request your approval.
And again, Commissioners, no one signed up? Approve, approve. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 4. Cast your votes, and you're approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 5 ED 196, application by Lone Oak Investment to dedicate a street and utility easement for Burning Iron Boulevard, located east of Portland and south of 164th Street.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Mark Ritchie. I'm with Civil Design and Survey of Oklahoma. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, pleased to say we can agree with all the TEs, and respectfully request approval of the item. And I can answer any questions the commission might have.
I'm here on behalf of the applicant, pleased to say we can agree with all the TEs and respectfully request approval of the item. And I can answer any questions the commission might have.
Basically, you're just trying to build your entrance.
Correct, the second entrance that was added based on the traffic study.
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item five. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you, commissioners.
Item six, ABC 739, application by Chubby's Chicken and Grill for an ABC One restaurant with limited alcohol located at 7640 Northwest Expressway.
Your name and address, please.
Mandy Hobson. The address is 7640 Northwest Expressway. The only thing that we did not get turned in was a drawing of the restaurant, like a floor, just a floor plan, that I do have with me if you need it.
It's just, you just want to say it in one?
Yeah.
I'll move approval, unless there's somebody signed up. No one has signed up? Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item six. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Item seven, ABC 738, application by Tucker's Number One for an ABC One restaurant with limited alcohol located at 324 Northwest 23rd Street.
My name is Gary Sander, 1909 Northwest 35th in Oakmont City. Here for an ABC overlay application.
This has already been to Urban Design and approved across the street from Cheever's, basically.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item seven. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight was deferred to July 14th. Item nine, C-5786, extension of the preliminary plat of Marabella Edition located north of 44th and east of Morgan Road.
Good afternoon. Doug Clausen, MKEC Engineering Consultants, representing the applicant today. We're in agreement with staff comments, and I would address any questions you might have.
Janice?
Well, this is a good illustration of the point I raised last time about, you know, whether we are looking at these as though they're being presented to us fresh or whether, you know, it's just, okay, fine, we did this once, we're going to give you another few years. I'm not sure, frankly, that this is one that I would look at today and say, oh, yeah, that's fine with me. It's not, you know, hugely offensive or inappropriate, but it's just an illustration, I guess, of this question, which I would once again pose, although I frankly admit I don't have a strong feeling about my answer to it one way or the other.
Well, no one has signed up, commissioners. Do you have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item nine. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item 10, C-6283, the final plat of Meadow Lake Farms, Section 6, located southwest 104th Street and west of Western Avenue.
David, after you introduce yourself, I've got a question to just frame the discussion.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. David Todd, Todd Engineering, representing the applicant.
Okay. Tell me what's changed between the preliminary plat stage and today, just to frame our discussion. Anything different topographically, for example?
Preliminary plat was approved about 10 years ago.
Right.
And it showed 111th coming all the way out to Western. There's a lake in that area.
And it was there then?
It was there then.
So at that point, at least, it was contemplated that the lake would go away and the road and lots would exist?
Correct.
Across that site?
Okay. In the last 10 years is when the Corps of Engineers has really started enforcing their policy of not getting rid of old farm lakes and natural habitat like that. So we went round and round with them and was able to get the lake that is in the middle of this addition redone. Mr. Buchanan lost a lot of lots that he had planned on from that original preliminary plat, but we did manage to keep that. But we were told, don't try to get rid of the other lake.
Okay.
That's what has caused us the biggest problem on this.
Yeah, I needed that background.
This is very confusing to me. What am I looking at?
That's the original preliminary plat.
Of what? Where does it fit? But where does it fit? I don't quite see it. Is it space here? Is that what we're looking at? Okay, I'm sorry.
I think the reason that...
It's a problem with handing me things.
I think the reason that it's difficult to see is because this that we just got handed eliminates a lake that is existing that they can't remove.
I see.
And so you've got to have to overlay this, knowing that when they drew this up with full intention of removing the pond, lake, whatever that was there, then the Corps basically said, that's not going to happen, don't even try, from what I understand.
That's correct.
And so thus, this plat wouldn't have been approved. They wouldn't have been able to do this regardless, based on what the Corps has told them.
I haven't gotten that far yet. I don't necessarily have a problem with what you're trying to do, I'm just trying to orient myself. So what shows on the staff report in the perforated line there is basically this part right here, right? Am I right? Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
And section three is different from the earlier or from the preliminary plat as well, because that accommodated the lake?
That's correct.
So in your original, you were going to take out both lakes?
That's correct.
Well, a substantial portion of the, what I would call the northwestern lake.
That's correct. It was going to be substantially smaller.
And then the other lake down in the southeast portion, at least on our drawings, what I'm looking at there, David, was going to be completely removed.
That's correct.
And so when we approved the preliminary, that reflected smaller and completely removed.
Correct.
Right? And so now, since that time in 2000, 2000, 2001, the Corps has said you cannot shrink the one lake and remove the second lake.
Right.
Pond, not lake ponds.
Correct. And they worked with Mr. Buchanan somewhat, but he's got a substantially larger pond there than he'd planned. It's nice, but it's substantially larger, and it's cleaned up. The other one is to stay in natural state.
That's the one that we're talking about that Southwest 111th kind of runs into now, right?
Correct.
Okay, and when you say natural state, that means whatever it is is whatever it is, right?
Right.
Okay, then the next question I have is, why are we not looking at a different preliminary plat instead of a final plat? And this is just a procedural question. I don't know what advantage or disadvantage one would be over the other necessarily, or why we're doing it this way instead of that way, or why we might prefer to do it the other way, but I'm asking.
I just think we didn't think the change was significant enough to warrant a new preliminary.
JJ, it's a completely different.
Nick?
Well, with that going there... Where we are today is we're looking at this section, and what you've done, David, because of the ponds or lakes going away and not being able to connect out to the west, you've now made what we're looking at today a gated community, where the rest of it's open.
The 106th and Silo Ridge Road has always been gated. From the original PUD 12 years ago, and on the preliminary plat, that's marked Section 4, has always been gated private streets. It is now. And what we're proposing to do is just to extend that area of gated private streets.
Where I'm going with you is the single entrance we have into this final platted area down at the, almost to the cul-de-sac on Silo Ridge Road. To get there, we go through that one entrance, and we service all these houses without adequate backup entrances. You haven't provided any emergency access to this entire tract. That's troublesome to me. I can see how, up until this point, where we have the loop around, whatever that is, 108th or Harris and Silo Ridge Road, you can loop through there and you can get back out to the 107th Street. But when you wind back in here, you're at that one little entrance, you're trapped, basically. And I'm having difficulty with that without some type of emergency access.
And David, you've had some discussions with staff and fire marshal about...
Yes, sir. At the last meeting, that was, Major Calhoun spoke up and had concerns about that, and that's why we continued the item. And we've since met with him, and we've agreed on all the houses in this new section that we will sprinkle the houses. And it was at his suggestion, and he said he was extremely happy with that.
That helps me.
Yeah. And extremely is a good word, too, that he's extremely happy.
One of the observation of the change from the original plat, from the new plat, we're eliminating some 50-something houses. From that original preliminary plat to this plat, there's about 50-something houses eliminated.
I don't know the number, sir, but there would definitely be elimination of some, and certainly, I think, you know, the lots are a little smaller in here, but the houses are smaller, so...
Yeah.
Yet we'll be losing the houses that would have connected and gone on out there. And that'll now just be green space.
Yes, more green space. Okay. Let's go back to the sprinkling permit.
In discussion with the fire department, it's been called to my attention that I've had a couple of situations where we've required sprinkling, and that requirement was not readily known to the public works folks. Permits got issued and some POs were issued on unsprinkled houses in areas that should have been sprinkled. So if we're going that route, can we flag this, like with a note on the plat? All houses must be sprinkled? I'd like to add that TE will...
That's not a problem. And we also, Mr. Buchanan's only restricting it to two or three builders right now. It's not like there's a whole lot of different builders in there, and they've been made aware, so we'll make sure that happens.
Well, but again, I'm looking, from a staff perspective, if we can get something, just a standard, if you will, that when sprinkling's required, we are going to require enough on the documents that is readily apparent.
Well, a different issue, but the same concept. Village Verde, which has 10-foot setbacks for the front of the houses, but 20 feet for the garages. That needs to be particularly highlighted, too, because it's another thing that's easy to miss at the permit stage. And Nick, on the sprinkler issue, which I really am happy to hear, because I think that any of these kinds of situations, as the fire folks say, they're extremely happy to have houses sprinkled, and that's really a great thing. Is your concern not having another access point on this alleviated because of the sprinklers?
Yes. My concern has always been... Now, it goes for all emergency access, but the real risk, from talking with fire, is that if something happens, they lose a rig at that entrance, they block their own path. They can't get in.
Well, okay, but then, but there are other emergency vehicles other than fire.
Things like that can come, but they're a little more mobile, if you will, than a hundred-pound fire truck.
David, what is the street width in here?
It's the standard 26 feet.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure something can get between two cars parked on opposite sides of the road, as I did yesterday when I went and looked.
Yeah, if I could, I'll just, kind of like what Commissioner Bright says all the time about making an editorial comment, I'd just like to do that. I know, David, kind of going past you, Steve, I know you've made, you have done a lot of work with city staff to get to this point. I also know that you've made a lot of concessions and potentially feel like that you've been held hostage by the fire department. I won't, I tend to agree there, but regardless of that, I will not do anything that would potentially put a negative spin in getting this approved. I want you to be, I want this to be approved. I want you to do what you've got designed here. I know that there were substantial changes made from this preliminary plat. Those changes were not things that you had in mind, that you wanted to do, but in order to build out this beautiful, might I add, subdivision, you did make those concessions. It cost you more money, it cost you more time. I just, I'd like that, you know, I'd like to know that, I recognize that. I know this has been difficult. Last meeting was not easy to sit through for me, knowing that there were items that were not necessarily concealed, but were not revealed to this commission. And so I hate to do anything that would put a negative spin, but this might actually not be approved. The fire suppression systems are a significant issue. From the very first time I was, the very first meeting I was at outside of this horseshoe, I didn't agree with them then, I don't agree with them now. Thinking there's flawed evidence, putting that aside. I just wanted that noted, that I appreciate what you've done. I know this has cost you time, I know it's cost you money. I hope this goes well, and again, I don't want to, I don't want to present anything that would be negative, that would potentially cause a denial for your final plat of this subdivision.
Well, no, it can't be, because we need, if we're going to move forward on this, we have to rescind the action last time denying the variance. Then we have to approve the variance, then we have to approve the item. Is that your motion? Janice? Rescind is the first motion. Rescind the action last time denying the variance to Section 528. Okay, we have a motion and a second to rescind the action of May 26th. Cast your votes. And that's approved. Now we need a motion to approve the variance to the same Section 528. Nick, you want to say something? Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Now, Nick, what would you like to say?
Well, I'm all for approval of the application, but I would like to add a T, flagging the plat. Anything else we can flag, JJ, that sprinkling is required?
Were there any other items discussed with staff, David, that need to be included as a TE, or is the sprinkling it?
That was it.
Okay.
Yes, that's, we're fine.
So we now have a TE five requiring sprinkling and a note on the plat. Okay. Have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, and the item is approved.
Appreciate you working with us on this very much.
That concludes the items for public hearing. Planning Commission committees, any reports? Planning Commission members, any comments, discussion? Planning Department? Susan? Development Services? JJ? Municipal Councilor? Citizens to be heard, seeing none? Any other business? Motion to adjourn? We're adjourned. That's 209. That's a nice, short meeting.